Everybody will stand for a moment for prayer.
Let us bow our heads in a spirit of reflection. Gracious and loving God, we gather this evening with humble hearts, grateful for the opportunity to serve our community. We ask for your guidance as we seek to make decisions that will shape the future of our town and impact the lives of all who call it home. Grant us wisdom beyond our own understanding, patience in our discussions, and clarity in our thinking. Help us to listen with respect, speak with honesty, and act with integrity. May we always remember that leadership is a privilege and service is a calling. Bless our residents, our neighbors, and all those who contribute to the well-being of this town. Let unity prevail over division and hope guide over choices. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Face the flag for our pledge. Ready?
I pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Deb, we have a quorum. So the first thing on the gym is to open it for budget.
Yes.
So I'll open the meeting for our budget for this. Go ahead.
I presented this last month. This month, we have the second hearing for approval. Does anyone have any questions?
Is there any questions from anybody, council or floor about budget? If not, council ought to entertain a motion for passage. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion, a second, all in favor, signified by aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, same sign. All right, Deb, that passes. Is that all we got on the budget?
Uh huh.
Then I'll close that part of the meeting out and we'll open the regular meeting. Let's go ahead, Deb.
Commonwealth.
Any discussion from the council? Any questions?
Have you worked, you say you've worked with this? Daniels seemed pretty positive.
Anything from the council?
No.
Entertain a motion for approval.
I'll make a motion we approve.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
Have a motion, a second, all in favor, signified by aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Okay. The first one was $56,122. The Yarbury, item 33, was $40,708. Okay. I'll put those two together. We gotta pay our bills on this project. Is there any discussion from the council? If not, I'd entertain a motion to pay those.
I'll make a motion to pay those.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a motion, a second, all in favor, signified by aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Okay, Deb passes. That's all you have?
You also have a contractor overtime.
Any discussion? If not, entertain a motion for passage.
I'll make a motion to pass.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
Motion, a second, all in favor, signified by aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Okay, that passes. Thank you. Appreciate it. Just so the people out there understand what's going on, we're, as you may know, we're in the process of redoing a lot of the water lines in town. And it was gonna be at a point, we were gonna probably, like other communities, be mandated in the next 10 years to do all that. Fortunately, we were able to get ahead of the curve on that and get about a $5 million grant from the federal government on the infrastructure bill, which is saving our residents a lot of money in the long run. But also, it's helping upgrade the water system and the wells that, so Chesterfield has good quality water for the next 100 years, hopefully. Right now, our water is good. There's no problem with it or anything. But this is just one of those things, outdated infrastructure, like sidewalks that crumble, you have to replace them. So that's what's going on, folks.
Okay. I'd like to, approval of the minutes for September.
Any questions, concerns, discussion about the minutes of September? If not, entertain a motion for passage.
I'll make a motion to pass the minutes from September.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor, signified by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that passes, Deb.
Approval of the claims and bank, state board of accounts, monthly statement.
Any discussion on that? If not, I'd entertain a motion for passage.
I move we pass.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a motion, a second, all in favor, signified by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes, Deb.
The next thing we have is the procurement policy for federal grants. The last time state board of accounts was here, they asked to see this and we didn't have one. So they did give me a copy of some ones and it's just a policy that's federal. You can actually go to GP Chat or whatever and get it, but it's basically out there. We have to have it on file. And everybody has to sign it.
It's always good to have written rules and regulations.
Yes.
Policies and so forth, so. Any concerns or questions from the council?
No.
If not, I'd entertain a motion for passage of this policy of federal grants.
I move we pass.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second, all in favor, signified by aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Okay, Deb, that passes.
Don't leave without signing these. Okay. Next is the approval of the police social media policy.
Yeah, just for information, you know, as I just said, policies and procedures are necessary for every governmental organization. And the chief and the assistant chief have updated the social media terms of the use of the policy for that. So basically, it's pretty much the same as it was with a little bit of changes based on the use of it. So if there's no questions or concerns, or if there is, please address them. If not, I entertain a motion for passage.
I move we pass.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a second, all in favor, signified by aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Okay, Deb, that passes.
And those, that's all I have. Can we get to Mill Creek?
Okay, just a minute.
I'll go ahead and do Mill Creek. Mill Creek is, this is coming into our seasonal holidays and parties and one of my favorite things for the rentals that we have. We are starting, the Parks Board voted last month to do a parents' movie night in the gym for kids. So November 1st is our first movie night. And people can come and bring their sleeping bags, whatever they want to sit in, and we'll provide popcorn and bottled water. Depending on how many we get, we might order pizza, but I know it's gonna be slow starting, but we're gonna do a movie every month for the kids through the winter months. So it's something fun for them to do. And this was actually brought up by several residents, so we just ran with it. And this month is Finding Nemo.
And Deb, we're gonna, the pantry, you'll talk about that, but we'll be giving meals out again this year.
Yes. Every year at Thanksgiving, we partner with the Christian Center and we feed those who are not gonna be, are gonna be home alone. And we have people that call in from other states asking us to get a meal for their loved ones. And we do that. All they have to do is sign up and we deliver it the morning of Thanksgiving. We're in and out of here by 10:30. Several board members help deliver and several people provide, the board members help with the food. So it's really a great honor and privilege to do that and we enjoy it very much.
And has Santa Claus contacted you yet when he's shown up?
Yes. He wants to have pancakes with everybody on December the 13th, I think it is. He's gonna be here from 9 to 11, bringing presents for all the kids. And the township trustee and the clerk treasurer are providing all the food for the pancakes and sausage. And the Optimist Club is going to serve it. And we're providing that as a donation. And then the price is going to be $5 for adults and free for children. So it's a price point that, and the money that they raise goes to the Optimist Club. So I think that'll be a lot of fun. Pardon me? December 13th, it'll be a Saturday morning, which is also the same day as our Christmas bazaar. And we had a bazaar here last weekend that was a huge hit. And we had vendors in the classrooms that have requested to be in the classrooms next month. So that's been my big concern about, I wanna fill all the classroom with vendors and we're on our way. So by Christmas, we should have them all filled.
And I might add, coming up in January, as you know, we have Zumba classes here and we have karate classes for kids, self-defense. And in January, those classes will be free again to the general public of Chesterfield. So something to think about after the holidays and decide you wanna get in and do some Zumba to work off some of that Christmas dinner, so.
Don't you do something with the food pantry that month, too?
Yeah, we, the reason why we do the free classes is, I guess technically it's not free, but everybody brings a can good and we give it to the food pantry so we can replenish the food pantry after the holidays. So a can of soup gets you a free class. So just to let you know. Okay. Anything, Jack, from the wastewater?
No, I mean, I think Scott's got everything we need over there, so, yeah.
Okay. Anything from your end?
I know, right?
We did get the new outfits on the halls.
And what he's talking about, folks, is if you notice, two years ago, we got new Christmas decorations that go up Anderson Road, Plum Street, and all around Town Hall and over toward our businesses over here. We just bought more this year. The council approved it to all, go up all the way up 32 from entrance point. So hopefully, that'll take care of the town for a lot of years to come with nice decorations for Christmas.
Which is one of the vendors that we use.
Yes.
Okay. So we need to approve that? Okay. $2,119.85. Any questions from the council? If not, entertain a motion for passage of approval.
I didn't hear what it was. I'm sorry.
Yeah, here.
Thank you. I just couldn't hear.
Go ahead and tell her.
Yeah, it's, it's, we have an issue, we need to tap in.
Oh, okay. Okay. Yeah, it makes sense. I just couldn't tell what you were saying. Sorry. No, that's okay.
Well, you should never say that.
Today.
No, I'm good.
So do we have a motion on this? Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, signified by aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Okay, that passes.
We have several residents here tonight and I'd like for them to know who Steve is. Steve is our town superintendent and building inspector. And we actually sent him to school to be a certified billing certification. So you'll see him around town and that's, if you have questions or concerns, you can always flag him down.
Did Cody get with you on that $200 for the equipment? Is it in here or?
No, because it was approved. They could do that on their own.
Okay, it's okay. All right, I just wanted to make sure. Anything back there from our police officers?
Up until there's nothing to pass on this time.
Wow.
We appreciate your strong support.
Okay.
Okay. Yes. I like mentioning the Halloween parade. Oh, Halloween parade, yeah.
Halloween parade is October the 24th. Thank you, buddy. October the 24th, it's a week before Halloween. And it will be here, the Optimist Club is doing a chili supper. I think they do a couple different soups, but it'll be down here in this room. But the parade will start over at Pick 'n Pay is what I call it, Harvest Market. And they'll come around, the fire and police will bring them around to the gym and then they'll do a little dance and sing or whatever they do. And they'll get a prize. And then they can come through all the classrooms and we have different vendors that'll be in the classrooms, it's local businesses, and they can trick or treat. So that's a fun indoor event. And October 31st, we have trick or treating from 5:30 to 8:00. And I think the police department's already posted it and it'll be on our sign here shortly. Starts at 6 o'clock.
Is there anything else from you, Deb?
No.
Is there anything from the council before I open it up to the floor? Okay. Okay, citizens, who wants to, I suppose somebody's got something, go ahead and.
If you stand, Jane, if you stand and say your name and your address. Jane Fuller, yes, get up.
Jane is just like high school.
Tell me your address again. What's your address, Jane? Your address? Thank you. As have the others. Go ahead and raise your hands.
We've all got pictures. It's a total mess. Now we've got strange men that come and go. It's like sent cheese all the time to break into a bed. We're sick of it. I have talked to them. Sometimes I have talked to the health department. We're never getting something done.
What?
Or can't get some kind of ordinance or tell people cleaner, hand your up. We're sick of it. Our, I put lots of, my houses in town. Put all the money in the way that. Then stocks looks on that street. She's put a lot of people that connect with the street that have put a lot of money in their houses. We're sick of it. If you guys can't get some of them, I called the health department to talk to a guy, Chris, very nice man. He says to get the board and the police department to get some of them done. We've got strange, got certain people on that street that have kids. You can see, like, they, they have a, they walk on that path. Uh, no, well, there's the yard. Yeah, our yard.
I got a question for, when you talk to the board of health, did they say they weren't even gonna come out?
He said maybe I'll check.
Do you know? Yeah, I understand, that's.
Done this for a year. I've lived in this town for 60 years and two days, two months, five years, right?
Now, when, did he say he was gonna get back with you after he went out there? How long ago? Did you say that was 507? What was that? Okay.
He did come by, walk around and check it out. But then I, I talked to him and then she called him after I talked, talked to him. And he, after I came, or after I talked to him, he did come by. And then she talked to him after that and he said, as of right now, they can't do anything tonight up to you guys and the police department.
Did you say that was 507, fast binder? Okay. Okay. All your neighbors?
Yep, yep.
Well, you got good neighbors anyway.
Make no mistake, though, in the last six months, we have cleaned that property up and I know we've spent over. Well. Come on, show me.
Can't there be a point or request on how many times the police have been called to that property and why she hasn't been cited with maintaining a public nuisance with all the riffraff coming in now, all the fireworks, her and her daughter, and then all the feral animals that are there living there. Pitting on everybody else's porch or some properties that are dying from it. And not only that, they're infected with B. rhinocerous HIV. So if you have a cat, your cat getting infected because they're, I mean, it's just a total nuisance over there. Besides just the cats and the trash and the, all the stuff involved with it. I mean, I really like to know, how do we go about, how, if, if our police are over there? And is there a citation of maintaining a public nuisance that can be issued and something done after it's issued again?
Well, here's, just my thinking out loud here, okay? Here's what I think we do. The first thing I do, we get Steve, he's a building code enforcement person. Get with a police officer to go down and see if there's any ordinance violations on the town. Find that first. The second thing is, is for our town attorney to get ahold of whoever Chris is at the board of health and get a formal report from him. If he went out there, we need that formal report, okay? And then see what actions we can take by what his report says if there's anything that corresponds with an ordinance violation. And that would be just my initial thought right now. Yes? Has what?
Has what?
Okay.
I saw, we have speeders on that spider. I mean, people come off of Wall Street, it's Walmart.
Yeah.
Where 30 and 40 in the hogs now, there's a twin park, I'm feeling. Got a just, kids, white kids, kids in here.
Yeah.
Right next to me. He gets out of the house, somebody's gonna run up for you.
Okay.
Now, she has a disability. Can she go from the front door to a delivery car that was speeding by? Run from her front door to a car, get her delivery to the front path across the street? Would she have a disability?
I can't, I can't answer that, nor would I wanna try, but. Yeah. When's Tom back from vacation?
Next year.
Really?
He may be back. He won't be in November.
So you have to have that in mind when you're asking about physical reasons.
Will you? Will you? Will you folks mind if at least we get something started on that and give us some, give us a couple weeks here to get started on something? I can get with the police department, get with Steve and the council, get with them and we'll do some type of movement, see where we're at. But what I would ask you tonight, if you'll write your name and your phone number down for Deb, so I have it, so.
I think I've got.
So, so.
I don't know those two, but I.
So.
Okay.
So I can give you a call? Yeah. Any what?
Any word?
Yeah, we have ordinances for that, yeah. Yeah. Yeah, they're not online, I don't think there's anything.
We're in the process of redoing our ordinance book. But if you call, make an appointment with me, I can get them for you in the book. What's your name, honey? Okay. What's your address? 513, do you? She's next door to you? Oh, no, she's on the other side of, that's the one you and I have talked about. Okay.
Oh, boy. Not inside, but outside, we can look at ordinance violations and so forth. That's what we'll do.
And bring it back in.
You guys got anything to say on all this?
We showed you the video that goes off.
No.
All right. We cannot sleep.
I wonder.
The dogs.
She's plural, that's.
The major, they jump and go to the garage door because they know that something's going on, work at. She has to pay a lot of money because when they were getting calls from the police chasing whoever they were trying to find, it was high wheeling trash cans and chain of clothes running through the back way. Chesterfield police didn't know that that was a breezeway or an easeway through the back of those properties back there. So we let them in one night and showed how many of them jumping over a fence into her yard and then jumping back over the fence through her yard to get away that way. So we had to invest in security cameras and subscription fees that adds to, you know. So we had to invest in security cameras and subscription fees that adds to, you know, someone that's living on a income, which a lot of people in general are, well, I mean, they were my age. When I'm, it isn't theirs. You're not saying it all, but just, there are big savings, you understand it, not big savings. And, and it can work out today.
Sure.
I'll address them. All the drugs. They make them over there. Okay, I know, yeah. And the drop off, the go by, the drop in, the drop out, the drop from. I mean, all of that, it's just, I am a change person being right next door. On the way, it looked like something was placed in one of her bird feeders. A car pulled in, went over to that bird feed. She don't, I mean, she's afraid, you know, complaining about her, she don't plead no liability for the drugs happening in the west.
That's actually the...
Because that's on her property.
Yeah, everything you've talked about, that's actually the hardest one to prove. I, I mean, because you got to have inside, you know, information on that, and trust me, I know that, 40 years in law enforcement, I, I understand that.
Cars that pull up.
Yeah.
I don't like that.
Yeah. Yeah, I under, I understand, I understand that when cars pull up and go, it, it raises red flags that there's some type of illegal activity, but proven, it's a different thing. I mean, that, the other stuff you're talking about, and, and trust me, I'm going to talk to the police department about that, okay? So...
All the police department, all that.
Well, it'll become...
They pull up, they say, I mean, I don't...
Yeah, I, I, I understand, but I, I, I've got some ideas on that. I, like I said, I was in police work for 40 years, so...
And they do, I have a worry. They do come, that is why the issue is why they're coming, they love their company, they protect, you know?
Yeah.
That's the business, we appreciate and respect our department.
Yeah.
We just wonder if our legal is kind because there's no law for, I mean, like I said, maintaining nuisance, is there a law on that? Or does that need to go through Madison County?
Yeah, you, again, you gotta, you've got to build a case to file. It, it's not that, it's not as simple as just taking, going there and writing a citation and do it. You've got to build a case, you got to do citations, and you got to build another case bill, and then you can file a charge like that. It, it worked, but, but, but let me, let me...
But now, I'm asking, do we need a point to see if even a citation has been issued in the last year?
Yeah, I'll, I'll follow up on everything, okay? Just leave your phone numbers and your name, and give us a couple weeks here. And, and I will, I will get some movement going on this one way or another, as long as it falls all within our legal bounds, you know? Well, we, we're not going to violate anybody's rights, your rights or their rights, but we'll certainly see what legal actions we can look at, okay?
Yeah.
If someone is looking at the citation, they can prove that.
It sounds like there's stuff there that we can pursue, but we have to prove it. You know, I know you guys see it coming and going, and for somebody living there, we would just got to make sure we could prove it, and that, well, that'll be the hard part.
But we'll, we'll get some movement going, okay?
We will look into it, that's the problem.
And I'll, we'll give you a call. I, I know, it, it all sounds, you know, you waited this long, and it's impatient and so forth, but unfortunately, when it comes to law enforcement, it takes some work and some time to get things done. And I'm sorry, go ahead, ma'am.
The only thing that, they mentioned everything, to all say this time, but add the animals.
Yeah.
I complain, I think the police know me by name. I think they're like, oh, Chris, you're blessed, oh gosh, okay, don't be a smart, but I, okay, I, I, we've lived 30 years, I think Stacey probably lived there, averaged about 50. I am saying, please, a dust of animals. I have taken one, one of, I've taken more than one in, but I've taken one of them in. Now that's my baby, I had to put it to sleep because I get one in around the line. Um, that one would die in my backyard. So I'm just going to let it die in my backyard. I took it to the vet, I paid for it to get human, me, you and I.
You and my wife would get along great, because that's what happens in our house, too.
I'm seeing, I'm, I live right across the street.
Yeah.
My friend, this is what I get.
Yeah.
We have got new windows, new siding.
New driveway.
And your wife...
Yeah.
Looks very good.
We tore the wall, that's another issue.
They have to fix it.
That's my, my major complaint because I, I save the animals, they come over, pee in our yards, smell up our front porch, back porch, because they're spraying, because they're not fixed. They're not bad. All you have to do, I've talked to humane society, ABL, and they say they can't do anything about it because we're not leaders. You know? I've been called for four years, and I was told...
Calling here, or calling?
Four years.
Anderson.
Calling Anderson.
Hey, Pat.
Where are you calling to, ma'am?
Well, I call, the police here, I call animal people, I call anybody else.
Okay. Are they just cats, or they got dogs, too?
They got two dogs, they ran over, they don't do nothing about it.
So they don't have a fenced in yard, and I think, which cats you can't keep them in usually, anyway.
And sometimes we have other people in town that have, Carla's taken two of her...
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Yep.
Bottom.
And I say, the police, I'm on that.
My sister lives across the way there, Ronnie and Anita.
Well, you won't be alone anymore, we're all going to help you, I guarantee you that.
I think he did, I think he did. A chihuahua, a small chihuahua?
We were just talking to him.
Yeah, 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 that's my sister.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
The police are not submitting enough rent anymore because he was in our front, out of the...
They take it.
Oh, the dumpster, yeah.
Yes.
I, I, I hear it, so I understand, but, yeah.
Well, I'll make sure you leave your address and your phone number and your name, so I have it, okay?
I told you, I'm sorry. I appreciate some...
And, and, and as I said, I'm, as I said, I'm going to get with the police department on the animals, the activity going on, our superintendent here to get with the police department to go down and see if they find any ordinance violations, get with the town attorney, to get with the board of health to get their report, and then we'll see how we can collect some things, see what we can do. It's not going to happen overnight, okay? I just want to let you know, but we will try to get some action going on it, okay?
Thank you for bringing it to our...
And I will get them the pictures of the first cleanup that we just did. So that's the frustrating part.
No, it's barely been before.
I know.
Earlier this year. I even had to call police, well, I called Debbie, it was mother there. I said, Debbie, they're taking stuff out of those, so she called...
So it was Mother's Day that we did it. We just cleaned it up once.
Yeah.
Back yard, Chris, a guy, he's, I don't think he's there at the time, but he, he's got this white truck that he places on the handlebars on Sunday when people put their trash out, and he goes right with neighborhoods and picks stuff out of the truck, takes it down here.
He's a monkey. He got a flag on his trailer?
Yeah.
Yeah. He stores all that down at the, at the lot down there.
Yeah. The worst thing they do, I mean, not size the animals, is five or six times a night, they have their car full of clothes, full of clothes, loading their house, their yard. They go through it, they stop people, what they want, they put in the trash, they don't take it back, so people that need clothes can't have it.
Yeah.
They do this daily.
Also, please expect, probably the chief or the assistant chief will be contacting you to meet with you and talk with you as well, to get some further information that you may have forgotten to give us tonight. I've made notes on, as you've spoke, so, but there may be some follow-up he needs to do with you, okay? Okay. Anything else? I know, I know there's a lot.
Jesus, God, I will...
Well, Deb, Deb, Debbie don't have anything to do.
They think I just sit at town hall and eat ice cream.
And she's like, oh, no, not her.
No, I don't, I take every call.
Yeah, yeah, she does a good job for the town, she's a, she's a good official for the town.
Yes.
Yeah. Anyway, if nothing else, I'm going to go ahead and adjourn, last chance to get something in there. Come on, one more thing, surely.
See, we like good or bad, because nobody ever shows up.
Yeah, I was excited.
So, you can say.
So can you look into the animal thing between Chesterfield and Mike Anderson's day, or...
No, not, no, I can't do anything with that, but I can look into, trying to figure out a way to look at some by, ordinance violations there. So I, I don't know. Again, again, this, this is all on the surface stuff I'm putting together, so you, you just have to bear with, with us on that, okay? See, when I was a, when I was a young police officer in this town in 1977, the chief then, he would, the, the chief had a dart gun, and he would go out and shoot the cats and the dogs, and then they would take, then they would, put them asleep, it didn't kill them, and then they would take them to the Anderson pound, which is obviously no longer there, it's a different thing. So, but we can't do that anymore. But at that time, it was pretty effective, but, uh, you know, the whole idea is to be, as you said, humane to the animals, because they're starving, they're homeless, and you're trying to, trying to figure out a way to take care of that problem, as well as decrease the population. So it's, it's a, it's a tough situation, it really is.
She has, right at the moment, she has a place, well, cats in the...
Yeah, see, that's, and she lets all those cats out of the house as well.
They're all fair.
Everybody's, you know...
Yeah, well, then, to me, that makes it think that she owns them then, whether they're wild or not, if she's letting them in the house, but that's just my opinion, I, probably not a legal basis, but, but anyway, anything else?
Anybody else?
All right, then I'll entertain a motion for dismissal from the council.
I move for adjourned.
Okay, we have a second?
Okay.
Good, okay. Thanks, folks, I appreciate you coming in.